Your voice, your opinion, your community. Fact TV, free speech protected.
All righty. Hello, everybody. This thing is a little low for me, but that's all right. We'll just, we'll make it work. Hi, everybody. Tom Mullins. I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission meeting here to sort of help us move through the meeting this evening. Thank you all very much for being here this evening in the library, the Keene City Library. We've had a couple of meetings now in the library. One last one was upstairs in the old Messina Hall. If people have not had an opportunity to go up there and check that out, I encourage you to do it. It's a beautiful space. The library did a wonderful job, Library in the City, a wonderful job refurbishing this aspect of the library a few years ago, and it's nice to have it available to us at this point. So we really do want to thank the library, the executive director, and the library staff, and the city for hosting us and allowing us to be here this evening. If you haven't had a chance to walk through the annex building and over into the new library, well, the old library that has been refurbished, I certainly encourage you all to do that. So we have an interesting program tonight that we're going to get into, but before we do that and before we get into the business meeting, the folks who have come to these meetings before know that we do like to recognize individuals in the audience who have taken time, some of our legislative leaders and their staff who have come to these meetings, which we really appreciate, and in no particular order, only because they fell this way on my little cheat sheet, which they have to give me, otherwise I would be lost. Anyway, we have the following here in the audience. We have Bobby Graham out of U.S. Senator Hassan's office, and I understand, Bobby, you have a letter? Where is Bobby? Back here, there he is. Why don't you come up? I understand you have a letter from Senator Hassan's office that you'd like to read to us. That'd be great.
Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. Bobby Graham here from Senator Hassan's office. Senator just sent along a small note here. I can try a little bit better into the mic there. Is that better? Okay. Dear friends, I am sorry that I cannot be with you today, but I join you in celebrating the important work of the Southwest Regional Planning Commission. Throughout its more than 50-year history, the SWRPC has provided a forum for the 34 municipalities across southwestern New Hampshire to collaborate on critical issues that impact local planning. This year's focus on the role of municipalities in planning for New Hampshire's energy future is just one example of the SWRPC's commitment to addressing some of the most important issues facing our state. Over the last two years, I have been proud to support laws that promote energy efficiency and investments in clean energy, helping to bring down costs for grant estaters, including the Inflation Reduction Act and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. The Inflation Reduction Act is taking important steps to help build a clean energy future and will reduce emissions by an estimated 40% over 10 years. The Bipartisan Infrastructure Law also makes considerable investments in energy at the state and local level, including grants for states and municipalities to strengthen energy efficiency, direct funding for state energy departments to reduce emissions, and investments in emerging clean energy technology. These provisions will help lower energy bills for families, businesses, and government, as well as strengthen our economy, create jobs, and combat climate change. Together, we need to ensure that grant estaters take the most of these opportunities to strengthen our economy and build a clean energy future. The Southwest Regional Planning Commission's work will be vital in these efforts, and I look forward to continuing work together. Thank you to the Southwest Regional Planning Commission and to everyone involved in today's important discussion. Together, I know we can tackle the challenges facing our state and build a stronger clean energy future. With every good wish, Margaret Wood Hassan, United States Senator. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. We appreciate that. We also have here from Senator Shaheen's office Elizabeth McKenna and Pam Slack. I understand Elizabeth has a letter as well from Senator Shaheen's office. I'm going to ask her to come up and read it, but I also would like to, you know, welcome Pam. Pam comes, I think, to almost all of our meetings, which we really appreciate, and we really appreciate the support that Senator Shaheen gives us through her staff. So Elizabeth.
Thank you. I have also come with a letter from Senator Shaheen, as she wishes she could be with you all here today. Dear friends, I wish I could join you all for the Southwest Region Planning Commission's annual meeting. Thank you to staff and supporters for your incredible efforts to better the lives of so many in the local community. Your work is vital to the success of our region and our state. The SRPC continues to embody the importance of community planning, and your expertise, leadership, and guidance are a vital resource to the many communities you serve. Your efforts not only help communities throughout the region to thrive economically, but also contribute to the social and cultural prosperity for their citizens. The focus of this year's meeting, why towns should play a part in planning for our energy future, is an incredibly important topic. The energy needs of New Hampshire have increasingly become a challenge that affect costs of living, our climate, and our economic and community development. We can manage these needs and adapt to these new realities by using the same approach that guides the commission's everyday work: by coming together, by supporting each other, by highlighting shared challenges and searching for broad solutions, by using the lessons of the past to guide our planning decisions today and in the future. Your efforts in these endeavors will continue to unite and strengthen communities in the region. I wish you all the best for an informative and productive annual meeting. Please do not hesitate to reach out to my office if I can ever be assistance to your work. Sincerely, United States Senator Gene Shaheen.
Couple of other folks that we have in the room tonight, some local legislative assistants and people that we like to recognize. Ruth Ward is here. Ruth is New Hampshire Senator representing District 8. Ruth, pleasure to have you. Thank you very much. Nick Germana from the State Representative's Office, District 1, Cheshire 1, thank you. And Lucius Parshall, a state rep from Cheshire, District 8, thank you. And I think, quite frankly, they all really do deserve congratulations for moving that budget through the way they did the other day. Good for you all for doing that. All right. Well, thank you for that. This is a business meeting. We did have a quarterly meeting on February 4, 2023. There are minutes associated with that. Hopefully, people, you have them at your seats. People who, if you've had an opportunity to read them, that'd be great. This is for the commissioners in the room to act on. We need a motion to approve the minutes of February 4. Somebody want to make a motion? Yep, and moved and seconded. All right. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on the minutes as presented? Not hearing any? Then if the commissioners are all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Minutes are approved. And we also have in the packet of materials that you have in front of you, the advisory committee reports. As most people in the room know, we have four standing advisory committees. They are not going to present this evening because we have other matters, but those individuals are here through the room. And Tim is here as the executive director. If there are questions associated with that, by all means, let us know and read the information that's in the materials. And at this point, Tim's going to turn it, I'm going to turn it over to Tim for the work product budget or the work budget for the next year.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome, everybody, to SWRPC's 2023 Annual Meeting. It's great to see familiar faces. I'm still getting used to seeing familiar faces in circulation, so it's great to have you here for what we expect to be a very informative program. Before getting into that, however, it's important, being our annual meeting, that we touch on a couple of business matters. So let me find my way here. So Item 3A in your packets is a proposed work program budget for FY 2023-24. So this is for the year beginning July 1 of this year. If you have your packet, you'll see a blue-colored sheet, and that's what I'm going to be presenting on right now. So this is a balanced budget. Simply put, that is, on the income side is equal to what's on the expense side of the budget, so it's at $1.43 million. Very curiously, okay, and compare it to the year that's ending June 30th this year, this is a departure of $1,400 out of $1.43 million. So what's that, about 1/100 of a percent or something crazy like that? So it's pretty much a stable budget from the prior year. There are some internal, you know, departures from the current year's budget. So in the upcoming year, we expect more focus on our Brownfields Assessment Program, housing, and public health planning. We also anticipate the beginning of an update to our regional plan. So what I'm requesting at this time is the commission accept this proposed work program budget for the year beginning July 1 as it's presented. Happy to take any questions.
Not hearing any questions? I need a motion to approve the work program budget as presented?
Seconded.
Seconded. Thank you all very much. So commissioners in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Wonderful. They now have a budget. Thank you all very much. All right. So, Tim, we're going to move into the nominating committee report?
Yeah, yeah. And with that, I think we can call on Leandra.
Yep. So just before Leandra gets up, Leandra's going to give us the nominating committee report for the next fiscal year. And just to note that the nominating committee did comprise myself, Gus Lorando, and Leandra this year to put it all together. So hopefully you will like our suggestions. Thank you.
I'm tall, too. The nominating committee report is the little yellow sheet in your packet, so you can follow along if you like. We recommend the following slate of officers for your consideration. Tom Mullins from Peterborough as our chairman, Gus Lorando from Swansea as vice chair, Sarah Carbono from Winchester as vice chair, Christine Rabidoux from Temple as our secretary, and Cheryl Mayberry from Wapole as our treasurer. You will also see below the other Board of Directors, people below, but I'm not going to read them all. So I would ask the chairman to move this slate.
So that is the nomination for the officers and for the Board of Directors. Are there any objections?
Should the minutes include reading?
Yes. Thank you. I'll do that, just so it's clear. For the Board of Directors, in addition to the officers, Brian Barden from Dublin, Rod Burchard from Cheshire County, Leslie Casey from Sullivan, Joel Lavez from Alstead, Jay Khan from Keene, Leandra McDonald from Peterborough, Ed Merrill from Jaffrey, Butch Morin from Richmond, Larry Robinson from Marlboro, and John Snowden from Westmoreland. Thank you for that reminder. So that is the slate of both the officers and the members of the board at this point. Not hearing any objection. I'll have a motion to approve the nominating committee's report as presented?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. So commissioners, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Passes unanimously.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Leandra. So I'm going to move right into the staff report. This will be a team effort. I'm going to start us off, and then I'll turn it over to a couple of colleagues. But I do want to reflect on the item we just tended to and through our nominating committee report. I just want to take a moment at our annual meeting here to thank all those who serve, all of you who are commissioners, all of you who serve on our board. I know it's a commitment, those who serve as officers. And I also want to point out, you know, Tom, I was looking at the length of service. We've been very fortunate to have Tom Mullins serve as our chairman for a long, long time now, and we're indebted, actually, to the leadership that he's provided. But in accepting your nominating committee report, Tom is now entering his 20th year as our chairman. And the continuity has been wonderful, but more than that is the support and the advice and the guidance, the counsel, the wise counsel that Tom always provides. That 19 years that just is completing now, okay, entering year 20, was in two stints. So back, oh geez, almost 20 years ago, Tom did four years, got a little break, and just was hankering to get back, I guess, and has been serving as chair since, I think it's 2007 consecutively. So really indebted to your service, Tom. Also, I want to just make quick reference to board members that are cycling off. So Jill Collins, not with us this evening, from Hinsdale, served for many years, served as our treasurer for many years, and is cycling off our board. So thanks to Jill. Chris Coats from Cheshire County has been representing the county on our board and is cycling off. And also Kate Neary from the town of Harrisville, served for a brief period of time and has cycled off as well. So I want to just recognize and thank those for their service. So in terms of the staff report, I'd just like to say a few words about the year that we are ending on June 30. And this is just a random set of highlights of accomplishments for this year. Trust me, not everything is on here. We completed a road surface management and pavement preservation plan for New Ipswich, organized a bus tour of resident-owned communities in the region. We completed watershed management implementation project for Lake Warren in the town of Alsted, provided ongoing staff support to the Menadnock Broadband Group, completed a microtransit volunteer driver program improvement feasibility study, launched a housing navigator program with focused communities including Chesterfield, Fitzwilliam, Hinsdale, and Winchester, completed a digital literacy and access needs assessment for the region, accepted an award of $500,000 from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in support of our Brownfields Assessment Program, completed emergency management plan updates for Antrim, Chesterfield, Langdon, Richmond, Sullivan, Surrey, Westmoreland, and Winchester, served as the region's mobility manager for community transportation, and completed recently a regional housing needs assessment. So again, just a snapshot, and what I'd like to do at this time, again, it's a ritual at our annual meeting, is recognize my coworkers, others on the staff. If you could, as I call your name, just kind of give a wave or stand if you're seated. So our office support specialist is Rich Cluff, standing over at the registration desk. Our office manager, Becky Baldwin, sitting here in the front row, taking meeting minutes. GIS specialist and planner, Henry Underwood. Our newly minted, brand-new planner, Jason Cooper. Welcome, Jason. And not in attendance today, our senior planner, senior project manager, Terry Johnson, who many of you know, and associate planner, Ben Greer. And we've, just a recent development, we've entered into an agreement with Carol Ogilvy to provide us with some assistance on small-scale municipal planning assistance requests. So welcome back, Carol. So in January of this year, JB Mack and Todd Horner were promoted to serve as assistant directors for Southwest Region Planning Commission, and together, the three of us form a directors' team. And at this time, I'm going to just turn the rest of the staff report over to Todd and JB, and Todd, I'm going to go with you first.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to see such a great turnout at tonight's meeting. 10 minutes before we kick things off here, I was looking for my notes for my remarks tonight, and I think I might have switched meeting packets with someone at some point. So if you have notes attached to your meeting packet, that's what those are. Luckily, I have them on my phone, so I won't be completely incoherent tonight. Technology for the win. So you heard Tim mention some of the achievements and activities at the Planning Commission that happened over the past year, and I'm going to build on that and share with you some thoughts about the next year and beyond. Not particular projects, but some more macro-level trends and issues that I think will affect our work, will inform projects that we're working on, and will influence where we prioritize our time. So I've limited these trends down to five or six. It's by no means a comprehensive list, but I think they provide some sense of, you know, what the top priority issues are in the region and at the Planning Commission. So one trend, you know, to kick things off, that I think we've talked about in the past, and I think it's worth raising on everyone's screen again tonight, is our changing demographics. And I was recently looking at census data, as planners are, you know, likely to do on any given day, and I was looking at the 65-plus population, how that's changed over the last decade. And I was really struck by that change. Between 2010 and 2020, the 65-plus population in the Menadnock region grew from about 14,850 people to 21,350 people. So that's a change of about 6,500 people, or 40%. And I was trying to wrap my head around, what does that number mean? And I was thinking, if you thought of, imagine a city in our region where all those people live, the 65-plus population, and the growth of that city, 40%, that population growth rate is twice than Atlanta, Georgia, or Austin, Texas, some of the fastest-growing cities in our country. And obviously, not all of those people, or even most of the 65-plus population in our region are new residents. You know, it's mostly current residents naturally reaching that point in their lives, but I think it gives a sense of the magnitude of that change. And if you imagined a neighboring city where everyone else lives, it's a bigger city, but it's shrinking. So the under-65 population in our region over the last decade decreased by almost 7,000 people. So this shift in our demographics really has far-reaching implications for workforce, for housing, for healthcare, and it's something that the Planning Commission continues to incorporate into our work with our communities, you know, what are things we can do at the local level to accommodate and plan for and influence that change. And I mentioned, one of the areas where this has a big impact is housing. This is an issue we talk about a lot at the Planning Commission. We, as Tim mentioned, we recently completed a regional housing needs assessment. It's something we, as a region, continue to talk about more and more, and so it's hard to pick out a piece of that trend to highlight, but what I decided to focus on was a growing need for greater choice in the housing market. And I thought I'd share two data points that illustrate that growing need for greater choice. So there's some research out of the Harvard Joint Center for Housing Studies that shows that 80% of the household growth across the country will be households without kids. So these are households that either have one adult or two adults, no kids. So that's, you know, by far the vast majority of household growth that will have different housing needs than generations of the past. They'll need other housing options than your typical single-family detached home, which they might not prefer, or they might not be able to afford. So changing household size, this is something we talk about in the housing needs assessment, and it's a key piece of the housing discussion. At the same time, we're seeing a rise in multi-generational housing. The number of multi-generational households has quadrupled over the last 30 to 40 years. So there's a lot of advantages to that, right? There's, you know, shared costs, there's maybe in-house childcare involved, in-house elder care involved, enriched family experience. So there's a lot of advantages to that, but it influences the types of housing choices that families are looking for. The third trend I want to highlight is weird weather and climate change. This is something that is difficult to talk about, right? It's something that kind of looms over other planning issues, but it's important to keep on the screen as we think about how do we adapt at the local level. And, you know, the recent research out of the New Hampshire Climate Assessment of 2021, which came out of the University of New Hampshire, it confirms, I think, what many of us already know. We'll see increased temperatures, most notably in the fall and winter, interestingly, and mostly at night, more precipitation and more severe rainfall events, and counterintuitively, more short-term drought, because it will be warmer, there'll be more soil evaporation. So it's a paradox where we'll have more rain, but we'll also have more drought. So like I said, weird weather, less snowpack, and I don't know if many of, we have many gardeners in the room tonight, but the early warming this spring with that hard frost we had a few weeks ago, that took a hard toll on many gardens in the region, but also our native trees and our, you know, forests and farmland more generally. You know, on the mitigation front, a trend that is becoming increasingly at the top of our list, and I think tonight's featured presentation reflects that, is what, a trend I'm thinking of, electrification of nearly everything. So we're seeing, I think we're on the cusp of our transport system seeing rapid electrification, our heating and cooling systems in our buildings, our manufacturing processes, and that's due to a number of reasons, like the falling cost of renewables, federal policy. Bobby from Senator, I'm sorry, Bobby, Congress, Senator Hassan, thank you. Like I said, I'm squinting at my notes here, was summarizing some of the federal policy that was recently enacted, which will influence the availability and cost of renewable energy. So electrification of our transport system and other aspects of our communities. And then, second to last, I wanted to highlight something I've been thinking about as we have expanded broadband connectivity in our region. I think if I were highlighting trends five years ago, the need for expanded broadband connectivity would be at the top of my list and many of our lists, and thanks to efforts in our local communities and Senator Khan, who's joining us tonight, we've seen great strides in that area. But with that connectivity comes opportunities and risks, right? So the trend I thought I'd share with you is the growing digitization of everyday life and a simultaneous need for fostering in-person social connection. So we're seeing more online tools being used to land a job, to access education, seek entertainment, get healthcare, make friendships, even find love. But, and we've also seen e-commerce grow, right? It's 50% above pre-bandemic levels, and in 2022, 58% of the workforce had the option to work from home at least part of the time. So these are some significant changes that hold opportunities, but at the same time, as I said, there are risks. One that came to my attention recently, I don't know if any of you read the recent Surgeon General's report about the impact of social media on young people, but in 2021, 8th and 10th graders spent an average of three and a half hours per day on social media, and there's been a documented correlation between overexposure to social media and mental health challenges experienced by young people. And we're also seeing decreased participation in place-based civic organizations, volunteer groups, local government committees. I know I've talked to many of you about how much of a challenge it is to recruit volunteers, and so there are challenges that comes with increased connectivity. But the challenge is, how do we maximize the upside of online tools while many we maximize the upside of online tools while minimizing the, the potential harm? And I think one way we can do this at the local level is to create physical places and programming that facilitate in-person interaction. And these places include town meeting houses, libraries, parks, schools. They also include private, privately-owned spaces like cafes, and watering holes, and social clubs. So those are five trends that come to mind. And to, to wrap things up, the sixth one that I wanted to share is just the increased opportunity for federal support. Those, it's really some unprecedented packages of federal legislation that were recently enacted that offer our communities new tools to address many of these challenges. And sometimes the overarching challenge can be figuring out where to start, how to identify the right funding source, how to put together a proposal that's competitive. And so that's something we'll be thinking about at the Planning Commission over the coming year and beyond, is how do we, we support our communities in that respect. And I, and we were just talking about this in the board meeting prior, but there, for our smaller communities, there is an opportunity through the New Hampshire Municipal Association to get coaching on this topic, someone to help walk you through how to, how to put together a funding proposal for a variety of programs. So by no means a comprehensive list. I probably rambled on too long, but these are some things that we're, that are on our screen at the Planning Commission, and we're interested, always interested in hearing from folks in our member municipalities and partner organizations about what's top of mind for you. We really want to make sure that our, our priorities reflect yours. So thank you for indulging me. And, and I think I'll pass, pass it over to JB to, to introduce our featured presentation. So, so thank you.
Hello, everyone. JB Mack here. So at SWRBC, our mission is to work in partnership with the communities of the Southwest region to promote sound decision-making for the conservation and effective management of natural, cultural, and economic resources. That's our stated mission. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Energy planning continues to be an important piece, aspect of the mission, particularly with respect to its linkages to and impacts on our natural environment and our regional economy. At SWRBC, we don't actually have a formal energy planning program. But luckily, over the last year, through a grant we received from the U.S. Economic Development Administration, we were able to do some energy work. The EDA Work Program includes a work task, Educating Monadok Region Towns About Community Power, state law RSA 53E. And this, this allows towns, cities, and counties to, basically, it, it allows them to empower residents and small businesses to buy their own electricity supply at wholesale prices, and also allows them to purchase more renewable sources of energy if they wish to do so, at greater, greater degrees than what's offered through the renewable source, sources that are available through default plans that are provided by electrical utilities. So we've taken on this task by partnering with the Monadok Sustainability Hub. And there's actually a, a display in the back. Visit the Monadok Sustainability Hub if you get a chance. We've visited with a number of towns, and a number of towns, as maybe many of you know, have started community power programs. Over the past year, I had, as I started working on the energy planning, I had the privilege of attending a talk held by our keynote speaker. I was inspired and impressed by his lecture, which gave me more context about the idiosyncrasies of the New Hampshire energy sector, and also painted a picture for me about how local community-based actions, such as the adoption of community power, are vitally important in protecting our natural environment and sustaining our regional economy. So today, I've asked our keynote to deliver a similar presentation to the one that I experienced a few months ago. One more thing before I introduce our speaker. After our lecture, after his lecture, I'd like to call on three local representatives to take up to five minutes each to talk about why they felt it was important to proactively plan for, for their energy future. So we'll hear from Andrea Hodson from Harrisville, Marge Shepherdson from Marlboro, and Terry Clark representing Cheshire County. So following their comments, we'll open up the floor up to the audience to ask, ask questions or offer comments. Now, what you've been all waiting for, I'm going to introduce Mr. Don Kreese. Don Kreese has served as New Hampshire's consumer advocate since 2016. The Office of the Consumer Advocate is tasked by statute with advocating on behalf of New Hampshire's residential utility customers before the Public Utilities Commission, and every other forum where those interests are at issue, including the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, sometimes known as FERC, NEAPool, which is the stakeholder advisory body to the Regional Transmission Organization, ISO New England, as well as state and federal courts. Mr. Kreese is the only consumer advocate in New Hampshire history to have been nominated by governors of both major political parties. His priorities as consumer advocate are energy efficiency, innovative rate design, customer access to and use of utility meter data, community power aggregation, least-cost integrated resource planning for utilities, and governance reform at ISO New England. Prior to his, to him serving as New Hampshire's consumer advocate, he previously served as general counselor to the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission, and as a hearing officer with the Vermont Public Service Board, which has since been renamed the Vermont Public Utility Commission. There's many other accolades and, and work experiences that Mr. Kreese has as well that I'm going to skip over for now, because I think you're really going to enjoy his talk. I want to introduce Don Kreese. Don, please come up.
Thank you for that kind introduction. Hello, everybody. A shout out to the folks that supplied the food at this gathering. It was really good. And, and apology for the lack of slides. I don't know if any of you have ever read The Cognitive Style of PowerPoint by Edward R. Tufti, but it makes a powerful case for avoiding the use of slides. And I'm a bit of an egomaniac, so I prefer it if people look at me anyway. In any event, thank you so much for the opportunity to visit with you today. It is well-known that Cheshire County is the crossroads of the universe. And so I am incapable of declining an opportunity to visit here and share a few of my meager insights. I commend the Southwest Regional Planning Commission for exploiting this well-known vulnerability. Let me start with a bit of level-setting. I am New Hampshire's consumer advocate, as you just heard. And so, as you also just heard, by statute, my job and that of my staff is to advocate for the interests of our state's residential utility customers. So here are a few things that I don't do. I don't represent the interests of commercial or industrial customers. They're on their own. I don't get involved in matters outside of electricity, gas, and water as provided by public utilities. For example, drug prices and rents and the cost of broadband are all out of control, but that's not in my bailiwick. I only care about New Hampshire customers, which means I am perfectly happy if residential customers in Massachusetts or Vermont somehow are subsidizing us. Also, I am an attorney, but I'm not your attorney, which means that we don't represent individual ratepayers. Finally, to reprise something I've said before, I am not the Lorax, which is to say that the Office of the Consumer Advocate does not pursue a decarbonization agenda or any other initiatives whose purpose is to address environmental concerns. So, the topic I've been asked to address today is why towns should play a part in planning for our energy future. And to get at the answer to that question, as with almost everything, history is the key insight. This is a point I made the last time I was in Cheshire County, and I reiterate it today. For good or ill, and here I am reprising a point I've previously given, in this instance, it is necessary to go all the way back to the Big Bang. Thus, we confront this question. When exactly was the Big Bang? Does anybody know? 14 billion years ago is an excellent guess, but wrong. The answer, the correct answer, is the Big Bang occurred on January 28, 1988. Anybody care to venture a guess on what happened on January 28, 1988? Wrong. It's a good guess, though. January 28, 1988 happens to be the day that Public Service Company of New Hampshire sought protection from its creditors in U.S. bankruptcy court, the first electric utility to go bankrupt since the Great Depression. Now, you don't need to have a PhD in anything to know what exactly caused PSNH to go bankrupt. The answer can be summarized in one word.
Seabrook.
Correct. Seabrook. It turns out that you get wiped out when you announce in 1972 that you intend by 1979 to build a two-unit nuclear power plant of 2,400 megawatts, all for a price of $150 million. Ultimately, only one unit got built, the plant ended up 11 years behind schedule, and the total price tag was a cool $7 billion for just one of those two units. I suppose you could say that the guy who caused the Big Bang was a certain car dealer from Littleton. Anybody know who I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Correct. I refer, of course, to the late Hugh Gallin, who ousted incumbent Meldrum Thompson in the 1978 gubernatorial election, based on his promise to sign a bill that Thompson had vetoed, the so-called anti-QIP bill. That's QIP, as in C-W-I-P, an acronym meaning construction work in progress. This is a remarkable piece of New Hampshire history. Imagine a matter of public utility policy deciding the outcome of a gubernatorial election in our state. That was so cool. I watched it with great, seriously, I watched it with great interest. I was a college student over in Vermont at the time. What the anti-QIP statute said, and still says, by the way, is that if you are a utility and you're building an asset, you cannot include the cost of that asset in your rates until the asset is actually in service. That is bad news indeed, when the asset in question is a $7 billion nuclear power plant. Unfortunately, as became quickly apparent, a utility bankruptcy is not just bad for shareholders, it is bad for customers, too. And in short order, to get PSNH out of bankruptcy and into the hands of new owners, New Hampshire soon had the, oops, soon had the highest electricity rates in the whole country. Which brings us to 1996, the year the legislature passed the Electric Utility Restructuring Act. Here's the premise, consistent with the deregulatory fervor of that era. It was determined that the production of electricity was no longer a natural monopoly. So what if we told all the electric utilities to sell off their generation assets, reduce the utilities to suppliers of poles and wires, which still were and are a monopoly, and let people buy their electricity from anyone who would sell it to them, which, it was assumed, would be all of those companies competing with each other after buying those generation facilities from the utilities? Now, it took nine years from the enactment of the anti-QIP statute in 1979 to sort out the legalities and drive PSNH into bankruptcy. How many years do you suppose it took PSNH, now with a new parent company and brand identity, Eversource, to reinvent itself under the Restructuring Act? Answer, 22 years. But finally, in August of 2018, PSNH, DBA, Eversource, finally sold off the last of its generation assets to become purely a poles and wires distribution utility. So you're probably wondering, how did customers make out in all of this? And the answer is, if you are a big commercial customer, say you're CNS Growers, or Keene State College, that sort of thing, you did just fine. Because big customers tend to attract good deals from companies with stuff to sell, in this case, electricity. But how did the rest of us do? The small businesses, us regular folks using electricity in our homes? The answer is, not so well. Why? Because small customers are way too expensive to service as sales accounts. So generally speaking, the only non-utility retail suppliers, super interested in small customers, turned out to be firms operating in, this will appeal to some of the scientists here, operating in the Bent湖 stratum. That's what my English professors used to call a metaphor. Per Wikipedia, the Bent湖 zone is the ecological region at the lowest level of a body of water, such as an ocean, lake, or stream, including the sediment and sub, subsurface, some subsurface layers. You get what I'm talking about? So, most residential customers stayed put. By that, I mean, they didn't choose a competitive supplier at all. And when you stay put, you end up with what the utilities call default energy service. Now, I don't actually have a lot of information about how this went in New Hampshire, but I do have a pile of information from studies conducted by my counterparts in Massachusetts and Maine. They have concluded two things after gathering a vast pile of evidence. One, customers who stayed on default service actually paid less than those who heeded the siren call of the Restructuring Act by migrating to competitive suppliers. And two, the competitive suppliers in Massachusetts and Maine have preyed on the vulnerable, executing various schemes to mislead and manipulate the elderly, the poor, and the unsophisticated. Well, here's the thing. I don't have the money to do a study like that, but generally speaking, the same competitive suppliers that operate in Massachusetts and Maine are the same ones doing business here. Do these companies somehow find virtue while they're north of Amesbury and south of Kittery? Well, if you think so, allow me to acquaint you with an engineering marvel designed by John Augustus Roebling that spans the East River between Manhattan and Brooklyn, because, boy, do I have a deal for you. Meanwhile, despite that tale of woe, things here in the Granite State were pretty hunky-dory from about 2005 to some point in 2021. Why? Thanks in part to advances in the technology of hydraulic fracturing, better known as fracking, natural gas became very, very cheap. We built a lot of new natural gas generation facilities as a result, and we use them to produce a lot of cheap electricity across what is now the one giant wholesale electricity market that is all of New England. But here's the thing, natural gas as a commodity sucked out of the earth is a boom and bust proposition. Prices are cyclical, and in 2021, the boom ended and prices soared. Things got even worse in early 2022, when everyone's favorite former KGB agent Vladimir Putin invaded Ukraine, interrupting natural gas supplies in Europe and sending prices around the world through the roof. So what happened? The price of default energy service soared as well. As recently as 2021, they were in the range of 10 or 11 cents per kilowatt hour. Today, as I stand here, Eversource's default energy service price is about 20 cents, Liberty's is 22 cents, and Unitil's is a whopping 26 cents per kilowatt hour. What a fiasco. But there's a silver lining, and here's where I finally get around to the official subject of this talk, why towns should play a part in planning our energy future. Not long after the legislature sent the Restructuring Act to Governor Merrill for his signature, the general court sent another really important, but far less noticed, bill to the governor's desk. That bill, which Governor Merrill also signed, created something known as community choice aggregation. You've already heard a bit about it today. The idea is simple and logical. Allow municipalities, in essence, to supplant the utilities as the default service provider in their localities by purchasing electricity at wholesale for everyone in town. Remember what I said about little customers being attractive only to bottom feeders? Doesn't apply if you've polled all, or nearly all, of the small customers in, say, Keene, or Marlboro, or Swansea, or Wilton, or better yet, all of them buying together. So, the astute among you- So, the astute among you are surely wondering, if community power aggregation is such a great idea and was authorized 27 years ago, why did it take until now to do it? The answer is, until 2019, the law required opt-in community power aggregation. That meant a town or a city wanting to do community power aggregation had to run around and sign up customers one by one. Ugh. But in 2019, the legislature passed, and Governor Sununu signed into law, a bill authorizing opt-out community power aggregation. So if you live or have a business in a town that does community power aggregation, you are automatically in unless you opt out. So, here is something I said before the first community power aggregation program officially rolled out in New Hampshire earlier this year, including right here in Keene, and something I still have no hesitation about saying now. I think that community power aggregation might just deliver, for the first time, real benefits for residential customers from restructuring. A transition for which residential customers in New Hampshire have paid hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, in stranded cost payments to utilities. It's time we got something back for that as residential customers, and I think this might just be our chance. Now, my counterparts in the two neighboring states that I just mentioned are running around saying, "Let's put an end to retail electric choice for residential customers." I'm hoping we won't have to go that route in New Hampshire, because this community power aggregation thing will spread through the state and give people a reason to feel confident they're not being ripped off by the outfit that is selling them the essential public commodity known as electricity. We're off to a good start. Here in Keene and the neighboring towns I just mentioned, you can pay Eversource 20 cents for default energy service, or you can pay Keene Community Power 11.1 cents, slightly less than 14 cents if you prefer 100% green power. So is that it, then? Do we now declare victory and go home? Or toss back a drink with a paper umbrella in it at some suitably named Vietnamese restaurant, say, "Fuck Keene great?" Well...
You're fired.
Well, not so fast, but as I guess all of you probably know, my favorite former restaurant in Keene is no more, and here I offer a heartfelt word of caution. Keene Community Hour doesn't get to repeal the laws of physics, or the laws of supply and demand, or the market rules that govern the buying and selling of electricity at wholesale in New England. Default energy service prices across New Hampshire are going to change on August 1st. And because, yes, I do own a crystal ball, I am here to predict with confidence that they are about to go down, perhaps dramatically. We already have Unitil's filing. They would like to replace their current 26 cent rate with a new rate of, drum roll, 13.3 cents. And, oh, just as an aside, I can't resist, here is the public version of Unitil's filing that documents the wholesale bids it received, and which it picked, of which it picked the lowest. See that? Don't get me started about that. I could do a whole nother talk about that. Okay. Eversource is scheduled to file its new proposed default energy service rates on Thursday. My crystal ball gave me a jingle on my cellphone as I was driving down Route 9, and let's just say I would not bet against Eversource setting a default service rate. Hmm, somewhere in the ballpark of the rate that Unitil is proposing. So, stay tuned. My point is this, community power aggregation may or may not be able to save customers a significant amount of money as against a utility's default energy service rate at any given point in time, depending on market conditions. But I'm convinced that in the long run, customers on community power aggregation will fare better than those using default energy service and those buying on their own from competitive suppliers. So, maybe now you're wondering, why isn't he talking about natural gas? Doesn't Liberty have big plans to convert its propane network here in Keene to hydrogen or something like that? Well, maybe, and I do find Liberty and its dreams and schemes to be intriguing. But here's the reality, and again, you've already heard about this. New Hampshire, like the rest of the region, and indeed, the rest of the country, is in the process of electrifying. Highly efficient air source heat pumps are the wave of the future for home heating, and of course, electric cars and trucks are the future of transportation. Just yesterday, I heard the internal market monitor from ISO New England, the folks that run our grid, say that last year may have actually been the turning point. After years of decline, largely the result of the miracle of energy efficiency, "The lunch you get paid to eat," said Amory Lovins, demand for electricity is turning the corner and appears to be on the rise again. My hope is that cities and towns around the state consider community power aggregation not as the ceiling, but rather the floor, when it comes to what they can do when it comes to empowering energy consumers and saving them money. I mean, look, as a matter of pure political science and American history, when Congress can't act, the torch passes to the states; when the states can't act, the torch passes to our local communities. That is what's happening here. A visionary municipality could offer its electric customers and taxpayers a whole suite of energy-related services. Energy efficiency, energy management, community solar programs, so you don't have to have a big backyard or a south-facing roof to take advantage of solar PV. Microgrids, so that we become more impervious to the grid's big failures, financial or otherwise. If you are a small town and you're wondering, gosh, can the folks who fill our potholes also provide sophisticated energy services? Well, my answer is, maybe, maybe not, depending on who's doing your potholes. But if you're worried about that, consider partnering with other towns to build joint energy programs. We already have two great examples in Keene Community Power and the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, whose ground zero is up in Lebanon and Hanover. And here, I just want to add, and aside, I found out today that the state's utilities are about to make a joint filing all about their basic failure to be able to provide community power aggregation programs like the Community Power Coalition, like Keene Community Power, with the data they need to take full advantage of what the law authorizes. So, the town of Harrisville, as I know at least some of the folks from that town already well-known, has filed a complaint about this with the Public Utilities Commission. The utilities are trying to grab that bull by the horns, they're going to make a filing that says, "Hey, we need a rules waiver from the PUC." And, oh gosh, some of us are going to need an extra eight months, and some of us are going to need an extra 12 months, and some of us are going to need an extra 18 months to get the job done. And, oh gosh, it's all going to cost 8 million bucks, every last dime of which we intend to recover from our customers. And let me just say, I've been in this business since 1999, and if I had a nickel for every time a utility said to me, "Hey, Don, that's a great idea, it's just that our billing system can't accommodate that." If I had a nickel for every time I heard that, I would be able to donate those 8 million So, I am a man of obsessions, and here is one of them. I'm a lawyer, and as a result, everywhere I go, I see principal agent problems. What I mean by that is, who is claiming to act on your behalf? And do they really have your best interests at heart, as opposed to those of shareholders or some other group that isn't you? Investor-owned utilities? Nope. Competitive energy suppliers? Nope. Solar companies? Still, nope. Even though they wrap themselves in the green cloak of virtue. Your publicly accountable voter-elected municipal government? Gosh, I hope so. I really, really do. So I end up, right where I began, with history being the key insight, noting that we're coming full circle. Way before the Big Bang, when the electricity industry was first getting started, electricity was fundamentally a municipal phenomenon. Cities built their own generating stations, they strung their own wires, or, in a lot of instances, they gave some company a franchise to do it on a municipal basis. We only got big multi-state electricity empires in 1898, when a miscreant monopolist named Samuel Insal gave a speech to his fellow industry titans, calling for the system we ended up with, big monopolies regulated by state utility commissions. It proved to be a great deal for shareholders, less so for residential electric customers, but maybe you'll take some small comfort in knowing that Samuel Insal eventually had to flee the country to avoid prosecution. He ended up in France, died in the Place de la Concorde metro station, where his body was discovered after somebody had stolen his wallet. How appropriate. There have always been forward-thinking municipalities in our country when it comes to electricity. Think about Austin, Texas, and Burlington, Vermont, or Boulder, Colorado, and other places that have leaned into the challenge of safe and reliable electricity with the fewest environmental harms at the lowest possible cost. Right now, in the year 2023, every municipality in New Hampshire has an opportunity to join in that noble endeavor. And as the state's ratepayer advocate, I strongly urge you to accept that challenge. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Don, before we go to Q and A, I've actually asked a couple of municipal representatives to tell their story about why they think it's important that their community adopt community power or be more interested in...
Cool. Hopefully, they won't say anything that contradicts anything I just said.
Right. And I think I want to start with Terry Clark, who's representing Cheshire County, which is the only county in the state to adopt community power. Terry?
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your new job, and congratulations to all of the new board. I got one complaint. I've had to follow Mr. Crease once before, and I got to tell you, it's not fair. It's not fair. But, with that out of the way, in case everybody here doesn't know, Cheshire County government uses a lot of energy. I mean, we have facilities, Maplewood Nursing Home, the Department of Correction, and we just put in a new ambulance service. We have County Hall, we have the County Courthouse, and the Register of Deeds. And, over the years, that's required us to use upward of five megawatts of electricity annually. Even though, you know, over the years, we've embarked on many energy efficiency programs, we brought that down a little bit, but it's still very, very significant. And that's why, when you had the opportunity, we heard about community power, and we heard about these people up in Lebanon forming the CCPNH. It's a coalition of community power communities, and we decided to join that. That number's 33 towns now, and it's growing. And, you know, to put that in perspective, that's 23% of New Hampshire's total population that are members of CPCNH right now. And, as a nonprofit agency, CPCNH was designed to maintain low overhead costs while unlocking the full benefits of community power for small towns and large cities throughout the state. With this collaborative partnership, Cheshire County towns and their households will pay less for electricity. Don has already explained a lot about what community power is. And, our program, just like the broker model that the city of Keene is using, we offer four different tiers of the mix of energy that you can buy. Our default is 23.4% renewable, which is higher than the utility's default. You can buy 33%, 50%, or 100%. And, one notable, something to look at, is that all of those options, all of them, cost less than the current default utility rate. So, we joined the organization, and I'm a board member now, and we held a community power forum on May 24th and invited members of select boards and energy committees. I see many of the people here today. Hi, Bruce, how are you? And there were, I think, 30 people there, representing at least 10 communities, who were interested in joining Cheshire Community Power, which, they would not have their own community power group like Keene does. But, these are communities that are small and don't have the administrative staff to be able to do these sorts of things. So, we explained, you know, the benefits that they would have to join Cheshire County and CPCNH in our program. The long and the short of it is that we need to take control of our energy purchasing so that what Don was just saying about who has your back? Is it the shareholders? You know, these utilities? No, it's not. You know, if we have a coalition of people who are nonprofit, who are working for you, and with your best interests in mind, you can always be sure that they're going to make decisions that it's going to give you the best mix of renewable energy at the lowest possible price. And that's really the bottom line. So, I want to announce that Nelson, the town of Nelson, has just voted to become a part of Cheshire Community Power, and they're holding a community forum tonight. I hope to be able to get out of here soon enough so I can drive up there and welcome them. And, so, in any case, I could go on and on about this thing, I've been working on it for a number of years. So, if there are any questions about how your town can join Cheshire Community Power?
We actually have, I'm sorry, wait till later. Wait for Q and A after all the local representatives get to speak.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we're going to hear from Andrea Hodson, from the town of Harrisville. Andrea, why is taking control of local energy important to the town of Harrisville?
Well, the second-highest rate in the country for energy, I think, was one straw. And, I will just say that the advantage of following Don in this moment is to assure him that our board works on behalf of our town. So, we launched community power last month, and we were able to deliver on just about every attribute that we featured in our community power plan that the town voted for two years ago last month. And, referring to my phone, that would have been competitive rates and choices, fiscal stability and financial reserves, consumer protections, community resiliency, and cleaner power. And we're not deep into those features just yet, but we did roll out community power, offering a four-tier plan that gives our ratepayers access to more renewables for, as Terry said, less than you pay Eversource default for 23% renewable. We started the nesting of reserve funds so that we will be able to inflict some stability in the pricing, and eventually, fund projects within the town of Harrisville or with other communities. And, I guess what I would say is that we launched with nine other towns last month. Nine other towns, we're sort of the nanotown with 672 customers. At the other end is Nashua. So, together, and these 10 towns are launched through their affiliation with CPCNH, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, so that, less than a month into it, right, the numbers are kind of fluid now because we're just getting started, but at the end of May, there were just about 76,000 customers. So, that's a lot of purchase power, to answer your question. So, a town our size with the 672 customers, aggregating our load with a town at the other end of the spectrum of this first wave, Nashua... end of the spectrum of this first wave, Nashua, and, you know, suddenly, we can offer great rates. And we will be settling, and so the rates that we offer now, the renewable mix, runs through the end of July. At the end of this month, we will be purchasing another bunch of power for the towns that are going to continue and others that are going to join us. So as Terry commented, there are just about 30, 35 towns in the Community Power Coalition orbit. Not all are ready to launch. They're still working through the process of authorizing community power. But the coalition provides so much scaffolding. So for a town of our size, where we have three full-time road agents, a full-time administrative assistant, a police chief, in this way, we don't have the staffing in our town hall. We get the scaffolding support through our affiliation with community power. So I'm very happy to write to the folks back home in Virginia that, starting in May, our household is running on 100% renewable energy, right? Didn't have to invest in a solar array and go off the grid. I don't, you know, we're not in that position. But we can do our bit to, at a household level, at a town level, at a coalition level, really start the process of decarbonizing ourselves, which is the urgent call of the day, I think. So happy to answer questions when you say so.
Thank you, Andrea. Last but not least, I want to move to Marge Shepherdson, representing the town of Marlborough. And you went with a broker model.
Thank you. I'd like to talk for a minute about how this community power fits in with our town's general energy goals. Back in 2007, we formed our first energy committee, and at the time, we had goals without percentages or specific endpoints, but it was merely to encourage energy conservation, energy efficiency practices, and the increased use of renewable energy in homes and businesses around the town. So we've been doing that since 2007, focusing on things like weatherizing the town hall and other town buildings, changing the streetlights. And of course, each time, we were also trying to save the ratepayers, the town taxpayers, some money, because when you put in CFLs or LEDs, then you're going to lower your electric bill. So when community power came along, it seemed like a natural extension for us. We went to the town, and they were interested, a town meeting passed that we should form a committee. So our new, separate from the energy committee, we had a community power committee to draw up a plan and come back to town meeting with that plan and see if people were ready to go with that. The mission statement for this group was updated. It was twofold: to provide electrical power supply to our community at competitive prices with the aim of bettering rates offered by our utility; and secondly, to facilitate our community's transition to 100% renewable energy in order to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we kind of leapfrogged over the process that Keene and others have gone through, trying to set 100% goal by a certain date. We don't have a date in there, but we found a town meeting after quite a bit of education through hearings and radio show and articles, that people were very willing to support this. They were in favor of it. We passed it easily by maybe 80%, 85% of the voters. It was a voice vote, so I can't give you an exact number. So we've been happy with that. We decided to, as a small town, Marlborough has 2,000 residents, I know there are others smaller, but it was small enough that we also felt we didn't have the staff to deal with this directly. We decided to go with an energy broker, combined with Keene and Swansea and Milford, no, Wilton. No, no, Wilton. Yeah. So each of those four towns went through the process we did. They have their own plan, approved by their own elected body. But we've come together through this one energy broker, through Standard Power, to buy our energy together. It's been, we think it'll work for us. The first price that came in, as you heard earlier, was very much lower than ever-source and should still be a little lower even after the new prices come out in the summer. So we're happy about that. We have a 30-month agreement for this energy, and I am sure it will fluctuate at times, but I am confident that most of the time, most of our residents will be getting a better deal this way monetarily. And they also, as other towns do, are offering the option of moving up to 50% or 100% green energy. Some have chosen to do that, and we will be having campaigns in the next couple of years to encourage other people to go that route. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marge. Before we, when we were planning the event, we thought there were going to be two wireless microphones. We don't have that. So I wonder if I can ask all the speakers to actually come up to the front, and if you have questions addressed to you, you can pass back and forth, and we'll use this mobile microphone for questions from the audience. Does anyone have a question?
Hi. So I was very interested in Terry's presentation. My understanding was originally that anyone who is not part of a community power plan, you know, like living in a range, that I could opt in to the county program. Is that no longer true? Now a town has to approve it first?
That is absolutely true. I didn't mention, I don't want to poach anything from Marlborough or Keene, but yes. As a matter of fact, if you're not already in a, like a solar situation, we're trying to work that out in the PUC, I guess. Is that right, Don? Even, you know, businesses and institutions can, you know, that are within the boundaries of Cheshire County can join in our program without having to go through all of the legislative process.
So board of selection has no say?
No, no, you can just contact us, and we'll get the paperwork to you.
And that's now? Right now?
No, not now. We're in a waiting period process. There's a 90-day notification process that has to go through a number of things to the utility. Someone alluded to the data, that's being a problem right now, getting the data from the utilities so that our bookkeeping processes can actually notify those people and bill them, you know, and re.
Thanks, Terry. Any other questions? And this goes to Don as well. Scott?
I think this question's primarily for Don. So with the efforts to, for the utilities to use a different timeframe to do their default rates, you know, pushing from their normal six-month blocks that have been a challenge, and I didn't follow the end of the legislation that was being put through, I think it did move forward where they could look for a shorter-term, you know, decision or purchasing energy at different intervals than the six-month block. How do you foresee that sort of changing in relation to community power? Will there be a significant change in the impact of pricing?
That's a really interesting question. So last year or until now, one of the three investor-owned utilities, Unitil, was sort of out of phase with the other two utilities, EverSource and Liberty, and they're back in phase, so that all three of the utilities are now putting out requests for proposals every six months to the wholesale power market, saying, please make offers to us for all requirements load following service for the next six months. And no matter when you do that, and it makes sense to do it from August 1st to January 31st, because that divides the winter in half, and wholesale prices in the winter are quite high, so this sort of reduces rate shock, essentially, rate volatility. But procuring default service that way, just putting out an RFP, saying, you know, whatever, give us your price for basically all requirement service for six months, that is not a terribly sophisticated way of acquiring wholesale power. One thing I didn't mention was the New Hampshire Electric Co-op, because its territory doesn't extend down into this corner of the state. But the current default energy service rate at the co-op, which they call co-op power, is about 13 cents, so half of what Unitil is charging. And why is that? Because they actively manage their wholesale portfolio. They have a variety of different power purchase obligations, ranging from a super-long-term contract with, I think, a wind farm, right down to some spot purchases that they basically make in real time. And so you get a more reasonable price that way by managing the portfolio. Now, you know, interestingly, the guy who was doing that for the New Hampshire Electric Co-op has just left the co-op and is now the new CEO of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, Brian Kalnan. That is an excellent hire, so kudos to the CPCNH for getting Brian. I think he's going to do a really good job for the coalition. But the meta-question is, do we want our utilities to do a better job of procuring default energy service? And the answer is maybe yes, maybe no. Because remember, the original premise of the Restructuring Act, and I would argue the premise that might be in the best interest of community power aggregation, is not to make default energy service, default energy service, a very enticing proposition, right? We want people off of default service and onto something else. And like I said before, I think the something else is community power aggregation, at least for most communities in the state, I hope. While I have the floor, allow me to just salute these three people in particular, because they are really the best of the best in this state when it comes to energy activism, right? I mean, Marge Shepherdson was a legislator who really mattered, and she had the vision to lead the legislature and get active on the municipal level. We have Terry Clark. Man, Terry Clark, like, his name is like on the bathroom stalls in graffiti at the PUC, because he is such a, he's so, let's just say, he's a familiar figure at the Walker Building, where we're all located. And, you know, the select board of the town of Harrisville, I mean, Harrisville is the feistiest community in the state when it comes to community power aggregation. You know, they're the people who filed that complaint that is sort of roiling regulatory circles right now, you know, props to them for having done that. So I just want to extend my felicitations and expressions of gratitude to these three folks and the places they represent. Now, Scott, did I answer your question or not? I kind of veered off in a slightly different direction.
Mostly. I think it was really that if they're able to procure power, the utilities at different intervals in that six-month block, and we expect them to be a little bit more nimble. They won't offer any of the other services, mostly, that the municipalities will.
Okay, so a more direct answer to your question is yes. If we told them to change the way they procure electricity, that would allow them to be more nimble. You know, again, it's a principal-agent problem, right? Like, if they do get more nimble, on whose behalf are they being nimble? Right now, what they do, they do by order of the PUC, and there's an open investigation at the PUC. My crystal ball, you know, the reception when my crystal ball called me on Route 9 wasn't that great, so I'm not 100% sure what I heard. But I'm pretty sure that that EverSource rate is going to look a lot like that Unitil rate of around 13 cents. And my worry, frankly, is that if default energy service rates come down to earth, as I think they will, we're going to get complacent, right? And go, all right, nothing's broken.
Tom, do we have more time for any more questions? Okay. Any other questions for the audience? Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you very much. An excellent presentation by everybody. We really appreciate it. I'll let the fucking great thing go for a moment. People in the audience who know me know why I'm saying that. Anyway, but my question is, just on that point, I mean, if the default rates from the sort of legacy providers start falling like that, right? Because many of us, many people are individually driven by their own economic circumstances, that's going to have an impact, it seems, on whether people, you know, feel inclined to want to, the towns and municipalities, to form one of these, which I entirely support, by the way. I don't want my comment or question to be taken otherwise. But what's sort of the motivating factor for that? Isn't this one of the motivating factors of the legacy utility providers, is to undercut this process to some extent? Would you agree with that?
Do I agree that the investor-owned utilities want to undercut community power aggregation? Well, you know, it's hard to attribute motives to people. Corporations, although they're virtual people, are not actual people, so therefore, they don't have souls. And so, you know, let's just put it this way. I don't think there are enough incentives for the investor-owned utilities to promote community power aggregation. They certainly didn't promote migration to competitive suppliers either. I mean, it is in the best interest of electric utilities to maintain their hegemony over all their residential customers, indeed, all their customers. I mean, they would be delighted if I popped up tomorrow and said, let's end retail choice for residential customers, because then, you know, that starts to put the empire back into place, like the old vertically-integrated days. So I'm equivocating slightly, but I think skepticism about the intentions of the utilities is always a safe bet. And again, I do have a crystal ball. By the way, you know, Vietnamese people don't really like those puns on the word "P-H-O", just apropos of nothing. So the demise of that particular restaurant in terms of our sensitivity about issues involving Vietnamese culture is probably a good thing. Just saying.
I would add to that. I would add to what you said, Don. No. But to the scenario in which everyone's offering supply at the same time, or, I mean, sorry, at the same price points, I would say that, you know, what community power goes above and beyond price is the choice for access of affordable renewable energy and advocacy. So in our affiliation with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, CPCNH, you know, there is a force that mobilizes when unattractive legislation pops up and a response and an engagement to reshape the legislation or redirect it or swat it down as possible. And there is the nesting of funds in the reserve fund structure of a community power plan that enables communities, again, to either create fiscal, you know, stability in the case of some crazy spike like we saw, or to support local projects, like training tradesmen how to install hot water-on-demand heaters, or contemplating a microgrid, or up in the North Country, there's a couple of towns that are coming together to imagine a power generation, a multi-town power generation project. So price, yep. It's certainly easier to get community support when you're looking at a 20-cent utility rate, but I think also the case is for everything else that goes with it.
So I have the microphone, and so I'm going to jump in. First of all, this is a really terrific content. I'm learning so much. I thank you all for being a part of this program. You know, it came up, Don, when I heard you say it first in your presentation, and perhaps this is a naive question, my not understanding all the dynamics at play, but it's coming up again here now. The first thing I thought, when you mentioned these default rates that are just now being announced, and your crystal ball is telling you more, isn't that an admission of price gouging for all these years?
I'm not sure what you mean by price gouging.
Well, how can they, all of a sudden, these default rates be dropped so precipitously?
Well, what drives the price of wholesale electricity is, we are super-dependent in New England on natural gas to produce electricity. Natural gas is almost always, I mean, if you want to get into the economics of it, it's almost always the marginal unit. So it's some natural gas generator and its wholesale bid that is setting the price of electricity in real time, essentially, all the time in New England, or all the time that it matters. And so when the price of natural gas is super- And so when the price of natural gas is super high, the bids that these wholesale suppliers are making into the market are high, and the prevailing price goes up. The wholesale market in New England is monitored, there's an internal market monitor and an external market monitor. So I think that the market itself, I mean, we argue endlessly about the rules that govern the way prices are set, and we could spend another two hours talking about forward capacity, that's a big deal. But I guess my answer to your question is that the run-up in default service prices of six months ago, and a year ago, and a year and a half ago, was a function of where the market was then. And the fact that it's going to run down now, based on the filings we're getting this week, that's also where the market is. And the point is that we are super vulnerable to a very volatile market because of the way we've built our electricity grid. And community power, community power aggregation is a way to change those dynamics a little bit by bringing, basically by asserting more power at the local level, and by that I mean political power and market power. And that's going to be good for consumers, I'm really hoping.
And is there a?
Thank you.
The fact that we use gas for heating as well as electricity in the winter, does that mean that the winter cycle is often more expensive?
Well, yes. I mean, if you really want to get into the natural gas problem, we, on a super-cold winter day, we do not have the natural gas supply to meet the heating needs of everybody who is getting natural gas from their local natural gas utility, on top of letting all of the natural gas generators run using natural gas and meeting what is a high demand for electricity at the same time. And so right now, as we speak, I'm going to Portland, Maine on February, June 20th, because FERC, the four FERC commissioners, are going to be in Portland to talk about this very problem. What do we do about winter fuel reliability? It turns out, I mean, if you really want to get into this, that the problem, all of a sudden, based on prognostications from the ISO, which also, I guess, has a crystal ball, that, you know, the winter fuel crisis may not be as bad as it heretofore has been claimed to be. And now we have to think about the summer peak, because there's another peak in the summer. So it's very, very complicated. If anybody wants to shadow me, if you have like a college student friend who wants to be my intern, like, welcome to my world. They can follow me around.
Yeah. Tim, I think that competition must be factored in here. I mean, there's really no doubt about it, that, you know, the default rates have been on the utility bill, and they pass through the utilities. And now with this spate of towns and the coalition coming in and making the case for renewable energy, and making the case for cheaper energy, can't help but to have an effect on the market. Because I've always thought that a good capitalist doesn't like competition, you know. And now that there is real competition in the market, and now it's being talked about, and it's at the kitchen table. So legislation and regulations that restrict renewable energy and net metering and all of those sorts of things in favor of the fossil fuel industry, they're going to, they're going to start changing, and they're going to start changing fast.
I hope you're right.
Unfortunately, I think we have one more question.
All right, Jay. You're going to help us clean up, though, okay?
Jay Khan from Keen. Hi. You are united in one common theme, and that is your commitment to empowering consumers to have a voice in this electric marketplace. And that is a huge benefit. So yes, I'm part of the audience that wants to applaud your efforts. The supply has been what ISO has used to control consumer thinking. And one of those, you know, so if we can have more supply, that's great. And that's why community power, community origination, I love that idea. And let's hope the legislation will keep up with what communities are able to do. The, meaning empowering communities to go to 20 megawatts or take any cap off of community power generation. But the big project that I have been hearing about is one that's in Canada. It's the hydroelectric. It's coming back with underground transmission. And so this is my curiosity around, is this going to provide a power, a supply solution for all of the New England states, where New Hampshire is a small piece of that overall ISO New England power demand curve? And is, what's the timing on that kind of proposal? And what is the potential of it to create a supply surplus such that choices can be made about the kind of power that communities are purchasing?
I might be the best qualified to answer that question. So maybe some of you know that National Grid has recently proposed a new transmission project called Twin States Power, I think it's called. And what they're proposing to do is to build a new transmission line from Quebec, south through Vermont. It's going to run along the border underground, cross the river at Monroe, New Hampshire, and then move south through the existing transmission corridor that National Grid already owns. And unlike the failed Northern Pass project that Eversource abandoned, the Twin States project isn't going to involve very many new transmission towers. Mostly, they'll be running their line on existing poles. So it's basically just a couple of new wires on the existing poles that National Grid already owns. So that will facilitate, it's unlike Eversource, unlike National, unlike Northern Pass, I mean, this is supposed to be a two-way line, so that we can move power into and out of Quebec. One thing that people may not realize is that when it got wicked cold this past winter, especially in early May, we were actually exporting power into Canada. Because remember, it gets cold in Quebec, too. And some of those other provinces next to Quebec. So, and we're interconnected with them. So we do want to be able to buy and sell and trade electricity at wholesale between us and all of our neighboring regions, including Quebec. So if you're a fan of my column, you know that in this week's edition of the column, I actually came out in favor of the Twin States project. It's business proposition depends on getting Infrastructure Inflation Reduction Act funding from the Department of Energy. And so I have written to Energy Secretary Granholm, urging her to look with favor on that proposal. But, and here's the big but, it turns out that Hydro Quebec is not the get-out-of-jail-free card for New England or anyplace else south of the Canadian border. Because suddenly, Hydro Quebec is singing a different tune, saying, oh, well, maybe we don't have infinite amounts of electricity for export to the United States. The CEO of Hydro Quebec quit rather clamorously in January. I think she was having a political dispute over her independence from the provincial government in Quebec. But her point has been confirmed by a few other independent studies that say that the previously believed infinite supply of electricity for export from Hydro Quebec is not, in fact, infinite. So Hydro Quebec's an important part, or can be an important part, of our future supply of electricity. But it is not the, it's not the panacea. Hopefully, that was somewhat responsive to your question.
All right. Well, thank you very much, the panelists. We very much appreciate it. Thank you, Terry. Good to see you again. Thank you.
So wonderful presentation. I think we all learned a lot from that. Chairman's prerogative gets the last comment. And I guess what I'm going to say is, to remember what really is important in all of this is to try and combat climate change. I mean, we talked a lot about, we talked a lot about the money, we talked a lot about the default rates and everything else. But a big piece of this aggregation program is to try and encourage people to use more renewable resources.